For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to do a land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Tocino, Mawekma, Karkin, Aloney people, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Uh, Mr. Freeze, can I please have the roll call?
Yes, Trustee Phillips.
Present.
Trustee Christian.
Present.
Thank you very much. I am going to move past item A three. Uh, so we can just make sure that all of the dates are confirmed on our calendar, so we don't have uh any uh issues. Um. For item A two, approval of the agenda. Uh, Mr. Uh, Christian, do you have any concerns with the agenda?
Uh, no, I don't have any concern.
Okay, thank you uh very much. And now item A three, I'm gonna move past item A three, just to make sure that uh everyone's calendar is in sync with those dates. We're gonna go on to public comment. Uh, item B one, members of the public are invited to speak on any matter related to the district's facilities at this time. Members of the public may speak on individual items of interest in the agenda as the items are discussed. Um, public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by phone. So this is general public comment. You will also have an opportunity to comment on each of the discussion items. Um, that said, Dr. Wool, public comment, we have twenty minutes uh total, and it's a minute and thirty seconds per person.
I think that um Ms. Mahia is gonna run public comment. But let's see if I.
We have one hand at this time.
Please be careful.
Right, Ms. Turley, you may unmute.
Yep, can you hear me?
Oh, sorry, mister.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll begin. Okay, thank you. Uh, so my name is Shane Turley. I'm General Counsel for Conterra Networks. Um, and I'll, I'll try to stay under the time limit here. Um, in two thousand fourteen, Conterra began deployment of a fiber optic network specifically designed to meet the needs of West Contra Costa School District. In approximately two years, after overcoming numerous permitting, construction, environmental-related obstacles, we completed our broadband network. We've successfully served the school district for over four years with high ultra, uh ultra-high-speed broadband. That, that bandwidth has delivered to sixty-one West Contra Costa school locations over ten gigabit net dedicated circuits. It's a fault-tolerant ring topology, and that network has seventy to a hundred uh in excess fiber strands available to help West Contra Costa bridge the digital divide and help bring connectivity to students. Uh, so we look forward to hearing more about West Contra Costa's broadband plans uh in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much uh for your comments. Um, we're now gonna move on to item C one, uh which is uh Citizens Bond Oversight Committee applicant interviews. Um, who's presenting this item?
I'm presenting this item tonight with the help of Ms. Payne.
Please proceed.
Yeah, so tonight we have four candidates we're interviewing. We have two members terms that have expired and they're applying for extensionally, and one member that's applying for their third term, and another member that's applying for a second term. We have one new committee member applying, and we have one member that's applying to move positions in order to meet the statutory requirement of our seven mandatory positions this evening. Our first applicant is gonna be Sally DeWitt, and she is applying for her third term. Her last term expired on January twenty-first, I'm sorry, January seventeenth this year. If we could promote Ms. DeWitt, and if we could begin with the questions. A brief introduction.
Louis, would you like me to interrupt and introduce myself? Oh, okay. Um, yes, my name is Sally D. Witt, and I've been a member of the CBOC ooh, for the last four years, and uh, and then a resident of Richmond, as most of you know, since for about forty-five years or so. And multiple generations of our family having gone through West Contra Costa. I was a former budget analyst with Chevron, now retired, and with my husband, uh, we, we run an art business now. So I'm open to questions.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, I'll be asking the questions that are presented in front of you. Um, these are questions specifically developed for applicants that have previously served a term on the CBOC. The first question today, please provide a quick summary of why you chose to apply again for the WCCUSD Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Uh, I have a very specific reason, and then a more general reason. So the very specific reason is that we're uh, I've been the chairperson or do a member of the annual report subcommittee for the CBOC for all these four years. And uh, now that the chair position is being taken over by another member of our committee, and she needs, she and her other, the rest of the subcommittee need support to know exactly how to handle the technicalities behind putting the annual report together. A couple of years ago, we moved it online to Google Docs, and it's, it's easy if you know how to do it. But it's, I'm the one that knows uh the most about it at this point, and so I, I want to be able to support her, and um, so that's my primary reason for for coming back on to the committee past uh the last term expiration. In general, I am a very strong supporter of the students throughout West Contra Costa County, and uh I, I view wise expenditure of facility money as directly connected to uh, school performance and student achievement in that the public money then can be directed to uh, teachers and principals, which I think is the place that it, it, it matters the most when it comes to uh student achievement and school performance. So that's my general reason for being on the Bond Oversight Committee and my specific reason for coming back on uh now.
Hey terrific, um, I'll ask question number two, but you've already shared a little bit of your answer, so just if there's anything that you wanted to add, and the question is this, please explain which subcommittees you've served on for the CBOC and which subcommittees you'd like to serve on if you're approved for another term.
Yeah, yeah, I think I answered that one. That's the annual report subcommittee.
Terrific. So moving on to question number three, what do you believe are the major, major accomplishments of the CBOC since you've served on the committee?
Oh, major accomplishments. Uh. I think we have been doing uh well, probably the, let's see, the main, the main one is just oversight or understanding the audits, the various audits that pertain to the facility program. Uh, we've, we have some very experienced people on the Bond Oversight Committee when it comes to school audits especially. And uh, so we've been able to track um progress being made by the district um, as they are a- as these audits go on year after year, and coming away from the forensic accounting investigation, which was done in two thousand fifteen, and then the progress being made in, in uh completing those recommendations and so forth. So I, I think that's one of our, our main accomplishments. And then I have to speak about, I guess, the annual report. And, and how we have been able to put together an annual report that has some structure behind it uh, so that each year, uh, it can serve as uh, um, you call it an archive or a record of what happened that year. That, that was our main intent in putting the annual report together.
Terrific. So last question, please describe what you believe should be a new goal for this CBOC.
Uh. That's a really good question, because it's multifaceted. Uh, I think of, as a member of the public, again, I would say that the main value of the CBOC is to be uh, eyes and ears, the, the taxpayers' eyes and ears, that's what it's meant to be um, into the inner workings of the district and the inner workings of the board. And that's what we, as taxpayers, expected, and, and so um, the new goal, I think we, we need to, we need to confirm that that's that our, our status, let's put it that way, in the, in the district and with respect to the board is, is clear. That we are partners in this, and that we ought, we have this role, and that this role is taken seriously, and um and that can, can be honestly reported back to the taxpayers in the annual report, for example, as, as being um authentic and taken seriously, and that we're partners in that. So I think that would be the main goal I would see for the foreseeable future.
Hey terrific, that's the last question.
Mr. Phillips, are there any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions. Um, Trustee Christian, do you have any questions?
No, I have any, no, no questions.
Thank you very much.
And as a point of clarification, uh, she is applying for the position of business organization.
Correct. Um, please proceed to the next person, and we'll do the public comment on all of them together at the same time.
Okay, we have Lorraine Humes. Uh, she's applying for the taxpayers' organization. This will be her second term. Uh, her term had recently expired on March fifth. We could promote Lorraine. Miss Humes, if you could give us just a little bit of your background, and then we'll get into the questions.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good.
So the first question, uh, please provide a quick summary of why you chose to apply again for the WCCUSD CBOC. And Lorraine, you're muted.
Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I've been on the committee for um one term. And I would like to continue the work. It takes a while just to know what's going on, to know all the reports and and all the programs that are connected with it. And I think I've gotten knowledge now, and I would like to continue and also help the new members, because I know what things have to be emphasized, having gone through it myself. The second question, explain which subcommittee you've served on. The only real subcommittee we have at this time is the uh, annual report, and I've been on that committee three times. Uh, the first time was just to really observe what was going on, uh, not really contributing very much. The second time, I was co-chairman, and now I'm chairman of the committee. Um, I've been on the general meetings, like when we had the proficiency reports and things like that. I participated in that, but that's the only subcommittee we really are going right now. What do you believe are the major accomplishments? I think the member that I've noticed are that um, the financial reports, we're working with the district, and the district is working with us on these financial reports, and I think they've gotten very, very good over the time I've been here. We have the PMP and we, for the performance, and we've worked on that. Um, I see it getting better each, you know, each year, and uh, let's see. Please describe what you would believe should be, oh, a new goal. I would like to see us work on the website. Um, it had been a proficiency uh recommendation, and, and we really have to get to work on that and get things up to date. And also make it more public-friendly, because that's really our main outlet to the public. So I would like to work on that again, and the annual report.
Hey terrific, that's the last question. Thank you, Ms. Humes.
Sure.
Our next applicant is Maisha Cole. Um, her term does not expire until June of twenty-two. Um, but tonight she's looking to move categories from parent guardian to parent guardian and PTA. And this, this Cole, we could promote her, and if there's just any, there's no questions for tonight other than, uh, if you had any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Uh, last night is a new applicant, Joseph Camacho, if we can promote him.
Mr. Camacho, it appears you're muted. We can see you, but we can't hear you.
Oh, I clicked it, it didn't take. Hello everyone.
Welcome. Um, so the questions are a little bit different for a new applicant, and we can do it either way. I'm happy to read the questions aloud that you see before you. Um, so the first question is, please provide a quick summary of why you chose to apply for the West Contra Costa Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Sure. Um, it's a kind of one of my values is public service in general, and it, it, for me, it's, it began with military service, and then I did some work kind of in the public side, working in the State Senate and House Representatives. And so now that I'm, I've kind of had a career switch, but wanted to stay involved with education, and uh, I currently work at Contra Costa College in an education role uh, as well as kind of wanting to do this outside of my, you know, kind of in a volunteer basis. So this is just kind of in line with my, my experiences and, and how I like to try to interact with the community when I can.
Terrific, thank you. Um, you did sort of answer question number two. I'll read it, and then just if there's anything else that you wanted to share. Briefly outline what in your professional background, work experience, education, or volunteer work would be relevant to the committee, and highlight any special or unique qualifications or qualities you feel would contribute to the committee.
Yeah, um, you know, my, my history in the um, the State Senate and the House education, higher education in K through twelve was kind of in my portfolio, as it were. Um, also, you know, I'm still working in, in the community college right now with, um, with high school students. Um, I'm now a social worker, and I serve um, in a counseling capacity with middle and high school students. And so I have a lot of kind of experience in different ways and different parts of education. I've also taught at the community college level, so I've had some a, a touch of faculty experience, um, working in counseling, and then as a staffer, so um, I, I just felt like those were some, some good qualities that I might be able to bring to contribute to the CBOC.
Thank you so much. Um, question number three, the CBOC meets monthly and has several subcommittees. Is there any particular subcommittee that you would be interested in serving on?
You know, I recall this question on the um on the application, and I chose annual report. I would be open to um, discussing, you know, I, I was just thinking of what the, what the committee might need, and so I, I don't have a um, a particular interest. All of them seem like they could be interesting, interesting in different ways. Uh, but on the application, I did choose annual report, but by law seemed interesting. Website, perhaps training, but I'm not sure I'm qualified to train yet, so. So those, that's kind of how I was looking at it. I don't have a great answer for you, I'm sorry.
That's a great answer. Um, last question, have you attended any CBOC meetings? If so, what observations might you share? Are you aware of any issues that the committee addressed recently?
Um, I did attend what I believe was the most recent uh, meeting, and I saw a couple of the faces here, there, some staff folks, and unfortunately, I lost my internet connection about twenty minutes through. Uh, but we were, I was observing the discussion about the update on the uh, the Richmond, I believe it was Richmond High School's gym annex, and the discussions about uh, kind of like the different forums that are developing. The main observation that I thought was um, was great was that it appeared that what I was hearing was that different reports and forums and, and how they were kind of developed were made with what it's, what seemed to be um, CBLC feedback, so that they could be kind of accessible and folks can navigate it, and, and so, you know, other than looking at the cool pictures of the nice upgrades, it, it was, it, it was nice to see that, that uh, my perception was that there was a good working relationship between district staff and CBLC. And um, if, if selected, hopefully we can continue that.
Terrific, thank you. That's the last question.
Thank you.
Trustee Phillips, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't have any questions for the applicant. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions for any applicant?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment. Uh, if you do have uh comments, now is the time to raise your hand. There are two hands raised.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Turley, did you have public comment on this item?
So just to be clear, we're taking, the applicants just spoke, because I think one of the applicants put their hands up, so we're taking public comment from basically the audience.
Right. So, not hearing from Mr. Turley, Ms., Mr. Gosney, please unmute.
Thank you. During a regular public comment, my hand was up, and then it kept being, being put down by somebody, so uh, this comment was gonna be on public comment. Speaking on behalf of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, we're disappointed that with nine applications in the queue, at least one of which goes back to September of last year, the facilities committee has chosen to place only four of the nine on the meeting agenda. The CBOC has worked diligently to enhance community participation in the oversight of the bond program, and has asked for the board for help at almost every board meeting where we've been allowed to speak, so perhaps you can understand why this failure or reluctance to agendize these applications has been met with so much pushback. Most of us thought that, uh, that these applications would have been agendized at last month's facilities meeting, and were befuddled when they were not. Proposition thirty-nine charges the CBOC with the oversight of the bond program, that is, how the board and the staff handles the precious tax dollars where they ask the public to supply. If you read the public social, social media opinions about the district's handling of the bond funds, people are wondering if the district, both the board and the staff, uh, are trying to cherry pick who they're allowed to sit on this oversight body. They wonder if the board and staff is trying to prevent certain individuals even from being considered for the CBOC. I frequently try to blunt specious accusations on social media, but I fear that no one will believe me when efforts to learn why these applications are being filed away go unanswered. We believe that the full board should decide who should sit on the CBOC, not staff, or just the two members of the facilities committee. The public understands that the board is busy hosting their own meetings on such a frequent schedule, but the board cannot place their full attention on reopening the schools and hiring a new superintendent.
Please conclude your comments.
Thank you very much uh for your comments, uh, Mr. Gosney. The so we're on discussion for this item, uh, the facility subcommittee, uh, which is, consists of Mr. Christian and myself. We do not decide uh who sits on the CBOC, uh, but we do review applications and make recommendations to the full board. That is a decision that the full board makes, uh, not us. Uh, but we are here today uh to uh hear uh from these applicants and uh to come up with a recommendation. Uh, staff's recommendation uh to the facility subcommittee uh is these applicants. Uh, I am fine with these applicants. Uh, I am moving that the facility subcommittee recommends uh these four applicants uh to sit on the CBOC. Again, that recommendation is to the full board. Uh, Mr. Christian, can you second that motion, please?
Yes, I second that motion.
Okay, it's been properly moved by myself. It's been seconded by Mr. Christian, that the four applicants that came before um, the facility subcommittee uh today be recommended to the full board, uh, four seats on the CBOC. Uh, on the vote, uh, Mr. Christian, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Mr. Phillips votes yes as well. Uh, the motion carries. Uh, I just wanna say thank you very much uh to these persons uh who applied uh and/or reapply. Um, we do appreciate your service. And we will be going to uh the next item, which is item C two, equity and access technology E-rate projects.
Hi, we have Dr. Wool and Ms. Logan presenting tonight.
Wonderful, thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. So we wanted to take the opportunity to present about some of our upcoming E-rate projects. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. We talk a lot about technology and the role that technology plays in student learning, and we know that first and foremost, it is important that students have access, access to information, to learning, anywhere, anytime. Uh, that starts with a solid infrastructure upon which we build tools, applications, and support, so that they're easy to use and they're, they can be used meaningfully. So if you go to the next slide, want to share a bit about where we've been. This district has been committed to the build of solid, robust infrastructure, again, to provide that quality, robust access for students. Back in two thousand fourteen, uh, we partnered with Conterra Communications to build a ten gig uh wide area network. It is a robust network that allows all of our schools to connect and have reliable internet. And we also really began our focus in two thousand fourteen in building out wireless, wireless in every school. Fast forward two years, two thousand sixteen, this district committed to the purchase and distribution of devices to students. A one-to-one program, forward-thinking that, that really addressed the need for students to be able to access their learning in school and outside of school. Additionally, we partnered with Sprint, Ten Million, to bring on hotspots for what at that time we were calling the homework gap, and we've now learned is the learning gap, right, as students are home and accessing distance learning from their homes. In two thousand eighteen, our focus was on outdoor Wi-Fi. So as we built the strong infrastructure of our schools of wireless, we then made outdoor wifi the standard. Since then, we've been installing outdoor wifi so that students can access learning from outside the school walls on our campuses. We also shifted from Windows devices for students to Chromebooks, again, to increase that access and, and ease of use for students so that we could scale across our system. And then lastly, in the last year, we've been very much focused on expanding our hotspots. We have distributed over 5,600 MiFi hotspots to students during the pandemic. And we've been looking at long-term solutions. We'll talk about that in a later presentation. But the focus really is, again, expanding that anytime, anywhere access for our students. E-rate has been an incredible partner to us in this work. So we, as a district, receive federal E-rate funds in the amount of an 80% reimbursement on eligible services. So that includes internet access, internal connections and maintenance of those internal connections. And it's based on our free and reduced lunch percentages. So we come before you this evening because we have a number of critical projects on the horizon that will, uh, be eligible for E-rate reimbursement. The E-rate filing deadline is March 25th, and we intend to bring to the board for approval on March 24th, a series of contracts. If you'll go to the next slide, I'll get into exactly what those projects are. So I'm gonna turn this section over to Dr. Wold, who can explain where we are with our wide area network.
So as we do each year, we put out the RFP. When we have a five-year contract for our wide area network, which is the internet service to our schools, we put out an E-rate potential contract for bids and we did receive several bids. Part of what then occurred is the world is changing so fast technologically. You just saw the slide that, um, Tracy showed you of all the different pieces. And we're in a world where, at the same time, to kind of give an analogy, there are folks that are using Blu-rays and there are folks that are using Betamaxs. And you find that in doing a bid, you cannot compare the two types of opportunities. And we're simultaneously working through our community ed connect project to bring internet wifi directly to the home of our students. As we reviewed each of the four submissions, we found that none of them were comparable and there wasn't a way to make a formal award. That put us into two options. One of the folks that did bid in that submission was Conterra. Conterra is our current provider. They bid an ongoing rate of $104,000 a month. That would be E-rate eligible. They currently are charging $140,000 a month in the current contract. When we determine that we are going to reject the bids, we do have an option to renew with Conterra for five years. We also have the ability to move forward with a different pathway that may not be E-rate eligible for a year, but may be the direction for the district. We approached Conterra about a one-year extension at the rate they submitted. At this time, they have not given us a favorable answer. The terms that we've heard back were multiple years. We understand from a business model, there's lots of different choices and everyone can make the choice on what terms they offer. So the options that we're looking at right now and that we will bring to the board is, do we accept a longer term with Conterra that stays within the E-rate at a much larger price point for the district? Even though it is leveraged, or do we move to creating a new RFP for the next cycle that is focused on the emerging technologies? And by then we will have completed our proof of concept and have a much clearer picture on our long-term needs. Our concern is entering into a five-year contract today, not knowing what we don't know about the proof of concept for wifi, which is, we believe, a human rights issue that everyone needs to have direct access now to the internet is not in the best interest of our students or of the district's finances. So we are open to the one-year extension with our current provider at the rates they provided. If not, we can move away from E-rate for a year, utilize some of our CARES dollars and leverage the CalNet pricing, which is likely about 100,000, no more than 140,000 a month, for one year while we create the next piece. This is a big break and it's a big change from the way we've done business. But we also believe you don't commit five years when you know that you're gonna change. It's sort of like, if you know you're moving, you're not gonna customize your home and put all those dollars in that you can't take with you when you're going down a different pathway. So those are our two options right now that we see is we need to get into our proof of concept to make the right decisions. Tracy, do you want to add it on top of that?
No, that was perfect. Thank you, Tony. So our next big project that we want you to know about is our wireless upgrade. So we put out an RFP to upgrade the wireless at 38 of our schools. This would install outdoor wireless at all of those schools as well as upgrade the nearing end-of-life network equipment, switches, access points, cabling in the last of our eight schools. So this is really an incredible project that allows us to build robust indoor and outdoor wireless at all of our schools. And we recommend that the board approve the word of contract to DecoTech for their responsive, responsible bid. And then last but not least, our internet services. This one is relatively straightforward. We currently contract with Contra Costa County Office of Ed, um, as our internet service provider, and we recommend continuing. So, uh, again, just to highlight the importance of E-rate funds in allowing us to build solid, robust infrastructure on which we build robust wireless infrastructure so that all students can access information and learning. E-rate allows us to leverage the limited dollars that we have, both bond dollars and general fund dollars. And there in that grid, you can see how we distribute those funds. So again, E-rate pays 80% of eligible services and then we use the general fund for that, the remaining 20% for WAN and for internet. And we use bond technology for wireless upgrades. So that concludes this presentation. Thank you.
And so what we are very interested from the facilities committee is with the WAN, we do, we are going to recommend rejection of all bids. We do not believe that any of them are in the best interest of the district. We do not have control over whether or not a vendor will accept the terms that we want. We are prepared to move to the CalNet pricing, but we would like to enter into a conversation with the facilities committee and answer any questions you may have about why we're choosing that and why we would make that recommendation to the board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you very much. Um, Contra, that's the company, correct?
Yes.
So what you guys are asking, well, what you're recommending is that all bids are rejected. I'm trying to make sure I, I'm processing this correctly. The law allows us to reject all bids and to stay with the current vendor, which is Contra. You guys have reached out to them, correct?
We have.
And you've asked them basically to extend the contract for a year.
Versus the five-year renewal that's in the current cycle, correct?
And they've told you that they won't extend the contract for a year. They'll only do five years, right?
They've actually countered with a three-year proposal based on what they believe is their infrastructure cost. That was at the same pricing that the current contract has, not at the pricing that they submitted to us in their RFP.
When did they submit the three-year to you?
Tracy, was that yesterday or today?
That was yesterday and there was actually an update since then, which was, uh, a reduction to a two-year contract. Um, at the, at the rate that we pay today.
So again, it's still at, at a rate higher than what they bid for the subsequent long-term contract. We did have an in-person virtual meeting with them where we expressed, um, great appreciation for the partnership. We're also in partnership with the cities. You'll see another item coming up. And we expressed the reasons for our rejection of the bid is that we need to get into this wifi project and make sure that we have a clear picture of what necessary technology pieces are in there. This space moves so much. In that meeting, we walked away with the feeling that we indeed were in a partnership. Since then, we haven't seen the same action. And our job is to do the right thing for our students. And the right thing for our students is not to enter into something long-term that might preclude us from being able to move forward with our wifi project because we locked ourselves into the wrong potential technologies.
Do you feel, I know you want a year. Do you feel that two years is still too long or do we need to have the year?
So I could answer that. Um, our original proposal was either one year or actually two years with an out. The importance of the out, as Dr. Wold says, is that it gives us the opportunity to get further down the path of this proof of concept for community wifi to really understand what's needed. And if it turns out that, you know, we can go one direction, then we have the, the ability to do that. We don't want to lock ourselves into the two.
Okay, so when you're saying the out, and I'm asking this for clarification, you're saying the out, what you're really telling me is you want a one-year contract with an option to extend to. And if you don't want the option at the end of the year, you don't have to take it. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct, and we wouldn't have a financial consequence for not taking the option.
That seems reasonable to me. Why won't they do it?
I cannot speak for the business model of any entity. I can only speak for the integrity of the school district. We believe partnerships are essential. We believe that our ask is in the best interest of our community that funds these things. I can't speak for the motivations of another entity.
Okay, if they agree to the one year with the opt-out or the option to extend it to, would that be okay with you guys?
That would certainly be something we would be considering and that's what was our initial proposal. We would, and we've explained to them that we are publishing the board agenda on Friday. At which point, if we don't have any action, we would be asking the facilities committee for their, um, input on us proposing to move to the CalNet model because we don't have an agreement with the understanding that if we do get an extension, we certainly want to maintain the partnership that we've had for the last five years.
Okay, but our initial proposal was the one year with an option to extend it to?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe they'll answer in public comment why they won't do it. I don't have any other, uh, questions. Well, and hold on, I have one more question. So if they don't do it, what you're talking about, which is the, uh, one year with the option to extend, your recommendation to us, the facilities committee and the full board, is to just go a different direction away from them, right?
Correct, and we're in a situation where based on the E-rate timelines, the decision does need to be made this week.
Understood. If anybody has, um, something to say, a public comment, including Contra, uh, please raise your hand, because public comment is about to start and I want to hear what you have to say. We have two hands up. Let's do public comment.
Right, Mr. Turley, if you would like to speak, please unmute now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you Chairman Phillips and, and, and thank you, Dr. Wold. We've, first of all, I would say we appreciate the district's challenges. Um, we, you know, we, we sympathize. This is not the only school district, uh, in the country that we deal with. We have, uh, hundreds of school districts that, that we serve and provide high-speed broadband to. I, I wanted to clarify, I think, something Dr. Wold said. We, you know, just to, to restate, we had a five-year deal, uh, with the district and that contract, that legally binding contract offered the district four five-year renewal periods. So th- they have the option, the district has the option to pull down one of those five-year, uh, terms. In the spirit of negotiation and in good faith, what we did was we, we offered the district, uh, a three-year option, a four-year option and a five-year option and different price points for each of those options. That was initially, and then more recently, in the last 24 hours, we backed off of that even and we're agreeable to doing a year and nine months. And I want to be clear, it's not, you know, our contract runs out September 29th, I believe it is of this year. Uh, we were willing to grant the district a year and nine-month, uh, extension, um, which we thought was reasonable and that gives us some certainty about the cost that we're gonna incur. It allows us to staff it, um, and, and operate it efficiently. So, um, you know, we can, we'll, we'll, we can make additional comments as required at the board meeting, but that's, that's what we would say at the moment.
And it looks like the other hand has gone down. So that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, uh, for the comment. Uh, we've already passed the question, uh, stage, you know, in our procedures. Uh, so we're on to board comment now. Mr. Christian, do you have any comments?
Uh, no comments.
I just have a few comments. Uh, Dr. Wold, uh, Ms. Logan, you need to do what's the best for our kids. Uh, you need to do what is best, uh, for our district. I think that what you're proposing, uh, especially with the magnitude of what we're trying to do, um, and the flexibility and the nimbleness that we need to do it successfully. I think a year, uh, with the option to extend for two. I think that that makes complete sense. And if that's not what you get, then, uh, I understand that you are asking for, uh, us as a facilities committee, uh, to not necessarily approve, because the full board approves, uh, but to accept the recommendation and then for that recommendation to go to the full board, that we go in a different direction. It's you're really more so asking for support, um, in, in what you're trying to do. And, uh, you will have my support, uh, in that. And if Mr. Christian has comments, uh, he's welcome to come back and, and, and share. But, uh, I do believe that, uh, you should have the support in that. I hope that Contra is listening. Uh, I really do. Uh, because I agree with you around the idea of partnerships. But I don't agree with anybody trying to hold this district hostage. And that's how I feel. And that may be inflammatory, but that's how I feel and I don't appreciate it. So, um, Mr. Christian, um, based on what staff is saying, uh, around them trying to get one year, a one-year deal with Contra and the option to renew, if that's in the best interest of the district, um, I do believe that we should support that as a facilities subcommittee. Um, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I'm in agreement.
Okay, so, yeah, you got it? Um, we're gonna move on to the next item. Uh, that's C3, WCC Ed Connect Partnerships are Key to Bridging the Digital Divide.
Wonderful, so. Wonderful. So appropriate uh, transition to the next topic. So yes, as I mentioned previously, access is key and we know and we've learned in, in all of the ways possible this year that it's not just about access at school, but it is now about access from home for students and it will be for the foreseeable future. So we, over the last year, ha- as you know, have been on um, a voyage to developing those partnerships and beginning to think about and design, how do we bridge the divide permanently for our students? So I'm just going to take us through a little bit of background knowledge first so that we're all starting from the same place. So this is about educational equity. What you see in front of you is a map of our district. The blue dots are our schools and the black dots are, are students without reliable home internet. And this was as of last year. If you go to the next slide, you can see how those numbers have increased. So as I mentioned previously, as of this month, we have distributed 5,600 hotspots to our students. Of those hotspots, 53% of our students live in Richmond, 25% in San Pablo, and you can see the remainder. So our areas of densest need are Richmond and San Pablo. So we, we took that up as a call to action. As Dr. Wold said, access, the ability to connect to the internet is a basic human right. We believe that is something that our federal government, our state, uh, our municipalities all have a role to play. And we also know that we cannot wait because our students are falling behind, and so we must do something. And so, again, our short-term solution is hotspots. They are doing the best that they can to plug the need right now. However, they are not reliable for the long-term and we know that. So our proposed solution is what we are calling the WCC, West Contra Costa EdConnect. It's a wireless project to provide reliable wireless internet to our students and to our staff for educational purposes. As you can see, short-term, this is the cost of our hotspots. It adds up and it adds up fast. We have been uh, very, very grateful to receive CARES Act funds this year, one-time funds that we've used to pay for these hotspots. Um, however, going forward, these, the CARES funds ha- have a, a time limit. And so this is not an ongoing expense that we can continue to incur. And that's another motivation for figuring out the long-term permanent solution. So our goals, as I mentioned, all students access to the internet free of charge from their homes to partner. Partnership is key in this. We cannot do this alone. This means partnering with cities, municipalities, the county, and with our vendors and technology partners. Reduce the need for secondary devices and, as I said, to build a permanent solution. So we started back in August, our board passed a digital divide resolution while we simultaneously explored three different possible approaches, different techno- technological ways of addressing this issue. Uh, we determined that a wireless mesh network would best meet our needs and we started working with the cities of Richmond and San Pablo to develop and really define what potential partnership would look like. In January, we issued an RFP and have selected two equipment vendors, um, who will be um, the, the two different e- equipments that we install for our proof of concept. And then most recently, we finalized our MOUs with the two cities. This, these MOUs are specifically for this proof of concept phase, which we will use city assets to really determine uh, the, the viability of our proposed wireless solution to scale across the district. So at the next board meeting on the 24th, we will be asking the school board to approve our MOUs with the cities of Richmond and the cities of San Pablo for the proof of concept. Thereafter, we would move on to a formal bid for installation. The installation would happen in two three-block areas, one in Richmond and one in San Pablo, dense areas. We're going to push it to the max, really test penetration, test speed, um, test, you know, sort of the, the most challenging of circumstances. And then we'll use the results of this proof of concept to determine, as I said, full scope, deployment, budget, and those additional partnerships that we'll need to bring this to full fruition. So I'll just conclude again by saying, thank you so much to the cities of Richmond, to the cities of San Pablo that we've been working with. They are on board to partner with us to design and build out a permanent solution for our, for our students and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Logan. Uh, Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
Um, the question I have is basically, um, so all the needs are being met for all the students throughout the district, right? Especially in the low-income areas, right?
So if you're speaking about hotspots being available to students, yes, they are available. I will say, and as I've said before, um, with hotspots, there are a number of variables and we can only control for so many of those variables. If you live in an area where T-Mobile, because we're using T-Mobile hotspots, if that connection is not the best, you're not going to have the most robust, reliable connection with the hotspots. Similarly, if you live in a building, it really depends on the construction of that building. Um, the signal may not penetrate the walls, um, particularly if it's, if it's dense housing. So that's real and that is impacting our students. So that's again, why technically speaking, yes, numbers-wise, we have hotspots for all of our students that need them. However, we are looking for a long-term solution.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for uh, that question and answer. Um, have the lawyers look at these contracts?
So yes, not only have we reviewed them with our council, but um, the cities have also had their council review. And we jointly met to ensure that there was calibration so that there's not deviance between one cities and the others. So it, it's had a thorough legal review with our facilities council, our bond council, and their general councils as well.
Are you talking about the city attorneys?
The city attorneys, correct.
Okay, and there's uniformity in the contract?
Yes.
Are they excited about doing this?
They are. This has been a refreshing, not that we don't have partners with the cities anyways, but when I talk about a general excitement to work together on something, the meetings that I've attended energize me, and I, I, I'll let Tracy speak more to that.
I, yeah, I would just add that, you know, when uh, President Phillips, you asked about uniformity in the contracts and the MOUs, yes, and that was something that both cities pushed for. They said, we're in this together. We want to do it the same way. We both believe that this is for the best for our students, so let's really partner in, in, in the kind of triangle to do that. So other than the recitals, um, the, the MOUs are exactly the same. And the districts have been, or the, I'm sorry, the cities have been highly motivated to make this happen. And I get emails daily. Did the board approve? What's happening next? When do we get it, to take it to our uh, committee?
Okay, that's good news. Um, if anyone has uh, public comment, please begin to raise your hands, uh, so you can uh, speak. Uh, I see a, a name, M. Cronin, I wonder who that is. Um, she may have something to say in public comment too. Uh, but uh, if you want to have something to say in public comment on this item, please raise your hand because we're going to move to public comment. No hands. Ah, okay. So we're going to move to board discussion. Um, Mr. Christian, do you have any comments on this item?
Uh, no comment.
Uh, I'll just say very briefly, uh, this is a long time coming. I know that we're in the beginning stages, uh, but this is uh, frankly, a dream uh, that people had uh, in this district before all of this, uh, including former trustee Cronenberg, uh, the former chief technology officer, uh, Mary Phillips. Uh, so we are realizing um, other people's dreams. And what I like to think uh, about public service is in many ways, it's a relay race, right? And somebody begins running, and they run, and they run, they run for their term, they run for their time, uh, and then they hand it off. Um, and whoever it is that, you know, crosses the finish line at the end, um, they were just one person running one part of the race, carrying the baton for one part of the race. And there's just so many people, um, in the cities, in the district, um, who have been waiting for this and who, who've run legs of the race. And so we're just running our leg of the race, but I want to make sure that I say thank you uh, to everybody um, who's had, who have, who has had and have expressed the vision of a connected, a connected uh, West County, um, and understands uh, what that means. And I, I want to say thank you very much to um, the city partners that we have. Uh, Mrs. Logan, Dr. Wold, Mr. Freeze, listen me up for your work. Uh, and I look forward to seeing this presentation uh, on the 24th. All right, we're going to go to the next item, which is uh, WCC USD School Site Audio and Visual.
Thank you. Me again, last time, I promise. So we wanted to bring before you this afternoon our current uh, thinking and plans for school audio and visual. So we have three topics uh, that we wanted to bring before you and a, a bit of discussion around why. Why are we talking about our multipurpose rooms, conference rooms, and classrooms? What we're looking at in terms of potential solutions and what the next steps are. And I'll also add, um, Mr. Freeze is here and it could certainly weigh in. Please jump in anytime, um, from a facilities perspective. We've been partnering along with the academic side to really think about, now that we've been in this pandemic for a year and doing distance teaching, learning, working, and we've learned a lot. Um, folks have tried to things in new ways, folks have reached out uh, beyond their comfort zones. Folks are using tools that they had never used before. So when we come back, we know that we're coming back to our physical spaces um, changed. We also know that um, there's a possibility to design a new normal. And so let's really take advantage of this time and think about what is going to be, what are the tools and the resources and the support that our staff need uh, to continue to take teaching and learning to the next level, but also to continue to take operations and the way we work to the next level. So if we can go to the next slide, the first, oh, here we are again. So this is our vision for technology, just reminding us, it's fundamentally about access. Then it's about ease of use and meaningful use. So what we're talking about here is more so ease of use and meaningful use. So on to multipurpose rooms. So currently, two-thirds, two out of three of our multipurpose rooms in our schools hold large gatherings of students and families and do not have permanent AV infrastructure. Generally, what you see are teachers, admins rolling in a cart, um, or there is older equipment that is no longer um, functioning at high quality. So what that means is that it's a relatively poor quality experience for students and families in that space, and it's really cumbersome for staff. So what we're looking at is built-in projection and audio that allows for quality visuals. So this is just a, a simple mock-up, just to kind of wrap our heads around what we're talking about. We're talking about screen, we're talking about sound, and we're talking about, again, a, a mounted, ceiling-mounted projector. So the next steps here are to go out to RFP for design services and evaluation of exactly what, what it is that we need for the best value. Um, this would be a universal design, um, and that we would solicit bids. So we'd go through that very formal process to get to a place where we could then decide, um, is this, is this the right next step for us? Liz, did you want to add anything there?
I think just the important part of that is i- i- it's trying to get to a standard, right? It's not everything's a one-size-fits-all, but we do want to get as close as we can. And it's the ease of maintenance use of the end user within our multipurpose rooms across the district. And so it's very important that we stop with the one-offs and make sure that we do have a standard for each one of those.
Thank you. So then the next topic, our conference room. So this is one that is really exciting to me. Our why. So we currently have PD Fridays. We have built schedules for schools and central office such that Friday is a time for learning. We do that learning online. It's cross-school, it's cross-site. The level of collaboration um, is incredible. You get first-grade teachers from across our six cities collaborating in one virtual space. It's really amazing. Zoom meetings have taught us that we don't need to drive across town to meet, right? That's how we used to work. Meeting happens, everybody has to drive, get in your car. That doesn't have to be any longer. And then what I've learned over and over again from teachers and principals is when we're back in our buildings, interactive virtual collaboration is something that they want to take uh, with us, to build the new normal. And so what we're looking at is a design that would allow us to have a display, some sort of flat screen, either mounted or on wheels. As Liz suggested, every, every school is different, right? Every conference room is different. There's no one-size-fits-all solution, but to, to standardize and have that um, kind of window. And then the other piece of it is a camera, speaker, and mic all in one. So that I can be sitting in a conference room as a, as a teacher with my first-grade team, that camera is focused on me. It tracks the sound, follows the sound, and then it projects it onto that flat screen and whomever we are having the virtual conference with. So it's high-quality audio, high-quality visual, allows me to stay in the same space and collaborate and meet uh, with other groups across the district, across the country, across the world.
And so I'm, I'm going to jump in real quick because we found that there's such an economy of scale in our professional development, our connections, and in some of our work where in the past, we would need to hire an expert to come in, and we'd be paying them to fly in, paying them for their time to be there on the ground, when we really only need them for two and a half hours. With Zoom, you can do a lot of things. The fact that we were able to run a common prep this year and that teachers across the entire district could connect at grade levels across 20 sites, we can do a principal's meeting in 10 minutes that used to take two hours away from students. So building this infrastructure with the one-time dollars that we have to maintain something that'll be permanent, it, it's almost a no-brainer that you have to make that. And you'll see, we have a phase three coming up next on this, that we believe the time is right and the time is now, and you don't get a second now to jump and do the right things. And so this will, without doubt, allow us to increase our professional support for every aspect of our organization.
So then briefly on timeline and next steps, uh, we intend to use this month to um, to do our testing and compatibility, set up demo conference rooms. It's really important that we get feedback from our staff, both school staff and central office staff. Then our intention is to bring our proposed solution to the board in April or May for deployment this summer. And then last but not least are our classrooms. So I'm going to talk about audio first. So you see before you some of the research. I think most important is that the better children can hear, the more that they can learn. That's been true, pre-pandemic is true now and will be true. And it's key that, that it, it doesn't matter where a child sits in the classroom, right? And so um, classroom audio has the benefits that you see before you on the screen. On-task time improvement, participation increases, fewer behavior problems. Particularly important for our link, English language learners to be able to uh, hear and for the sound to be clear and intelligible. And then it absolutely supports our students with learning disabilities. Add to that the fact that uh, our teachers will be wearing masks. And masks create a whole other level of speech intelligibility, uh, sort of complication. You lose visual cues in wearing a mask, audibility or the loudness of a teacher's voice is reduced. There's a decrease in clarity, and then there's an increase in, in teacher's vocal strain. So because of this, we have been investigating potential solutions. What you see before you is a mock-up of what a teacher amplification system could look like. So a teacher, you could see a, a sample teacher on your left would have a device that hangs around his or her neck, uh, that is the microphone. And then the classroom speaker is a flat panel speaker that can either be permanently installed in the ceiling um, or more likely, um, for our Um, or more likely, um, for our, for our circumstances, it can actually just be set on top of a surface. It's important for best sound quality that it is situated opposite where the teacher is, so that it's the best sound experience for all of the students in the room. So we have, uh, surveyed our teachers and continue to get more responses. Um, here's a 280 teacher responses of which 93% of them said that they would use a voice amplification device in their classroom so that they could be heard clearly through a mask. And here we're giving you a sense of, of cost, what we're talking about. There's a cost for the device itself, and then there's a cost for the delivery and setup. We would leverage a piggybackable contract for procurement and as, as Dr. World said, really take advantage of the one time funds that are available to us right now.
And so I'll add one more thing, uh, reason why now. I'm sitting in a room with multiple people. I'm wearing a mask. We very likely will be wearing masks in classrooms for at least a infinite, uh, an undefined period of time. Having this voice amplification becomes even more essential for students when you cannot see someone's lips, even with the clear masks. There, we believe that this becomes another access issue to ensure that quality instruction in person happens in a way where everyone can be comfortable and still be connected.
So we are currently in the midst of a road show. Our ed tech coaches have sample uh, classroom audio devices and they are going out into the classrooms of teachers who are currently teaching distance learning from their classrooms who've said they want to pilot this and provide feedback. So that is happening now. We're getting great feedback. Um, we intend to bring this to the board sooner than later. I am concerned about inventory. There is a great demand for these devices across the country, many districts. We, we even heard from some of them during our, um, COVID in schools presentations. This kind of voice amplification tool is really critical, uh, for return to the physical building. And so I would like to move on this sooner than later. So we intend to bring this to the board for approval at an upcoming board meeting so that we can procure the devices and have them deployed in time for school to start in August. And then last but not least are displays. So along with audio goes the visual. Most of our classrooms use a standalone projector, uh, a, a cart, uh, with a, with a projector on it. Again, that has worked fine. It does the job of projecting visuals onto a screen or onto a, a physical whiteboard. However, um, it, it takes up a fair amount of space. It does not allow for interactivity or collaboration. And it's a single display as opposed to what teachers are finding more and more so now, the importance of a second screen. And so we are exploring classroom panels. By that I mean a, a flat screen. So again, just a, a sample visual, so we can wrap our heads around what we're talking about, whether it be mounted or on wheels. Um, but essentially it's a digital display that allows a teacher to project content, what, what he or she is teaching. It allows students to collaborate and interact with that content even more so if it's touch. It also potentially saves space in that it can either be mounted on, on a wall or it can be on wheels so that it, it can move, but is at the very front of the classroom and isn't in the area where the student desks are, which we know we're limited to now in our, in our ratio, given the social distancing requirements. So we are, um, again, we are looking at potential solutions this month and next we are um, engaging teachers in that process, uh, to inform what we ultimately recommend. And then we intend to bring our proposed solution to the board in April, May and to deploy this summer. And I believe that concludes our presentation. Yes, references, research is the last slide. Dr. World, you're freezing.
Yeah, I'll just kind of finish and say that we've been spending a lot of time learning during the pandemic and none of this is a response directly to COVID. What it is, is a recognition that public education is now different. We now use technology way more than we ever have before. And we did not have our classrooms configured for this. With a document camera and a throw projector does not create interactivity. It does not allow somebody to have a virtual class. We now know we could offer virtual classes to our students while we're in person and have a student take an AP course at one high school when they're at another. So we have to have our rooms configured in a way that that's possible moving forward. And that is, we believe the intent of some of the one time dollars is to create ongoing lasting equity division busters by bringing the right technology in. And we'll take any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions on this item?
Uh, yes, I, I have a question. Thank you, uh, President Phillips. Um, the question that I have is, um, are, are me on the most of the high schools that we have now, uh, are, are basically they have built in uh, technology into the buildings, right? In the brand of schools what we have right now, El Cerrito, Deanza, Pino, right? Uh, and the middle schools, Pino, Meadow, uh, Deja. The more modern schools have more of the technology built into the schools. Is that correct?
So what Ms. Logan is talking about though, I think your question is the technology in the classroom. So most new schools have projection capabilities. They do not have voice lift sound. And that's what she's talking about tonight is a way for a teacher to project their voice within the classroom.
Right. Uh, and the question, but the other question when I'm asking is that the majority of the new schools are conducive to more of a learning environment. Basically the way it's built and where they structured and, and where, uh, you know, these are easily done. And when I'm getting that, you know, I'm hearing everything about technology. Um, and when we're talking about equal playing field or equity playing field, then it goes, what goes in my mind right now, I think of Kennedy High School and I think of Richmond High School. These are the only two high school not on the same equal playing field with Pino Valley, Deanza, El Cerrito, you know, the, uh, or the more modernized schools. And then for the technology to work at Kennedy, it's a lot of stuff got to be done and lots of stuff got to be done at Richmond High. So I'm just, you know, just trying to picture this in my mind, you know, um, so is, you know, it, that, that's what's in my mind right now. I'm just trying to picture this.
So I, I, I think what, to make sure that we're talking the same thing. Clearly we know that some of our schools that were built previously that have not had a brand new modernization, don't have the same infrastructure. And so there's two different things. There's the entire facilities build, which the, um, prioritization committee is working on and will be bringing criteria. But then there's also within each of the classrooms, that immediate technology upgrade that we can do. We're talking about the immediate versus the construction. But we do agree that there's also additional facility areas that this committee will be discussing as it pertains to prioritization.
Yeah, cuz, cuz when I'm, cuz a multi-purpose room was, was mentioned. And, you know, and I've seen the multi-purpose room at all the other sites, but when I look at Richmond High Kennedy, they don't have that same kind of built in. They don't have the same thing. So it, yeah, that's all.
Uh, Mr. Christian, I'll just add to that to say that I was speaking specifically of Kennedy when I'm talking about multipurpose room and conference room. Um, they are one of the schools that if an event is to happen, they're rolling in a cart with a projector on top and they're not getting that high quality sound and visual, um, that could be available other places. So, um, so you're right. And I think we have an opportunity right now to not wait for schools to be built. But we can really install this technology that's flexible and mobile and allows staff and students to access it right away. We don't have to wait for a new, uh, entire facility.
Okay. And then I guess to that, um, it, it's, it's, it's built, I mean, it can easily be taken out when, when the school is, you know, when you put in a new school, you won't lose money, you know? But you put, you putting it in, but you won't lose, you know, it could be removed and put into the new school, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, as Dr. or Dr. Freeze, Mr. Freeze mentioned earlier, um, when we talk about a standard, every school is different and needs something. So if it's a school that we know is going to be reconstructed, we're not going to permanently install. We're going to design that in a way that it can either be on a mobile stand, it could be rolled out and rolled in. Or some way that even if we install, it's a relatively short term install so that we're not investing dollars in something that's not going to stand, but we're still meeting the need right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for those questions, Mr. Christian. So I have a few questions, um, myself. So the classroom audio. That's what I'm gonna start there. We're basically talking about, uh, miking the teachers, right? Okay. And you did a survey and 280 with 280 responses, right?
Yes, as of, as of when this was published, although I just looked and I think now it's up to 300 and some.
Okay. And out of that 280, 93%, almost everybody has said that they would use this technology. Um, how is this survey being put out?
It's put out, I direct email, uh, teachers with a link to the survey. And then also, um, I believe that UTR through their channels are also, uh, getting it in the hands of teachers.
And that's a link to our survey, the survey you're talking about?
Yeah, it's our survey. We created it, my team.
Okay, but has every teacher in the district been emailed this survey?
Correct, yes.
What are we, and how many teachers do we have?
I believe we have about 1,500 teachers.
Okay. What are we doing to make sure that about 1,500 teachers respond?
Yeah, so that's a partnership that I'm taking up with our UTR president. Um, and she is working with rep council to really encourage teachers to, to, to take the survey and have their voice included in this.
Okay. So you're saying that some of these things are, all of these things are immediate needs. I understand how classroom audio is an immediate need. How is the AV for the multipurpose room an immediate need?
I'd say the AV for the multipurpose room is a combination of it's been a need. And the moment now seems important because we will be able to have, um, in some form or fashion, students together in our multipurpose rooms, although social distance. Um, and we want eventually with families as well, and we want them to have a quality AV experience. I mean, I would certainly agree with you in terms of immediacy, the classroom audio is number one. Absolutely. Um, I would say though, and Lewis and Dr. World, please jump in, that the multipurpose room issue is one that I've heard about ongoing from our site leaders, um, and staff since I arrived almost three years ago. And so as we look at AV and talk about classroom AV, this comes up and like, what about my multipurpose room? Schools have been trying to fund this with site dollars, but they don't have the funds to do it. And it's not, it's not an equitable approach. So we are taking advantage, I think of a moment in time to say, let's do this right so that all students and staff have the same kind of access across our system.
And I would just reiterate what Ms. Logan said is that what we see is a lot of the schools are trying to fund their own, uh, AV systems and just to say that they can't, one, they can't really afford it. And two, they're getting sub, substandard systems and they're back to the projectors on cards, um, mobile sound systems. And so I think what we're trying to do is really is, uh, level the playing ground to make sure that we have equal facilitation within our, within our MP rooms for the schools.
What, since we're talking about leveling the playing field, um, we're talking about equity. Mr. Christian brought up a really good point. Um, that some of these schools are starting at very different places. And what I feel like I'm hearing, and maybe I'm not, and so this is really a question, but what I feel like I'm hearing is that in this process, schools that have more are going to get even more. And that's, that's what I feel like I'm hearing. Is that what I'm hearing?
No, no. For the schools that, I'm sorry, for the schools that already have, uh, AV in the multipurpose rooms that are, um, would meet the standard, we would not be replacing or upgrading the systems. We would only be installing systems in schools that would not have current AV capability.
Okay. Can you bring this committee a list? This might be helpful. A list of where you, um, would like to put, for example, um, the AV multipurpose room stuff, because I think that will answer what I think Mr. Christian was asking. And I heard what he was saying. Um, and he has me, he has me asking the same question. Um, so if you guys were able to give us a list that said, you know, these schools are okay. These schools don't have. And that I think will fill out the presentation that you're trying to make. And I think it might make some people feel a little more comfortable with what you're proposing. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Will do.
Okay. Okay. Um, the second thing that I want to ask you is how do you plan to refurbish? And, and I'm going to put this in the context of the tablets, right? Um, you know, I remember a year or two ago, whenever it was, you know, the reserves to refurbish the tablets, they were spent. And it wasn't refill. So I love the idea around the technology. I love it, you know, uh, but how are we gonna keep this up? What's the plan?
So thank you for asking that, Trustee Phillips. We have built into the operational budget a refresh of Chromebooks already built in as part of the multi-year proposal that we brought forward. They're knowing that that has to be built in. As we move this way, the good thing is you're not replacing everything at one time. You build in a smaller replacement budget for those displays that goes forward. But indeed, that is a cost to doing business now, just like a textbook. And so we're treating it like a textbook and putting it into our operational pieces so that we don't use one time dollars and have no backup plan. So we've taken care of the student device. We would then have to do the exact same thing for these.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions. Um, and then I'll make comments, I'll say comments for later. We're gonna go on to, uh, public comment. Uh, is there any public comment?
I do not see any at this time.
Okay, Mr. Christian, do you have any comments?
Uh, no comments. No comments.
Okay, I know we're running short on time and we have another item. Um, so I'll just say this very briefly. In the past, this district has invested heavily in tech and then it wasn't used. Um, and there's a, there are a number of items. I mean, if we even, since we brought up the Chromebooks, for example, uh, you know, we, we are a one-to-one district for certain grades anyway, I guess now for everybody. Uh, but there was no requirement that those tablets were even used. And the truth is, um, we had tablets that stayed in the carts, um, in some classrooms and a lot of classrooms. Um, and then we had other classrooms where the, you know, the teachers and the students use them, um, religiously. And then we had everything in between. And so the idea of modernizing our classrooms and bringing, um, things like the, the hybrid conference room, um, I'm very concerned, not about the idea, not about the idea. I'm very concerned about us spending money and then these things are not actually used. And that has happened in this district on more than one occasion. That's why I asked you about the survey for the audio, uh, the classroom audio. It makes complete sense. But we have to get to a space where But we have to get to a space where if we are going to make significant expenditures, then we have to have commitments from the sites that these uh, technologies are actually going to be used. Because otherwise, it's a waste of money. Um, you know, if, if we, it, it took, you know, and I, God bless everybody for trying to get up to speed, you know, on how to use the tablets, for example. But how long were we a one-to-one district before COVID hit? Well, the reason that we were all running around like chickens with our heads cut off when COVID came, even though we've had the tablets for years, is because nobody was required to use them. Nobody was required to do the PD on them. And then all of a sudden, it was like, oh, my God, I have to use this. How do I use it? Well, if we had done what we were supposed to do, that would not have been such a big issue. And I'm not criticizing anybody, and I hope people, um, focus or hear what I'm saying. Um, and not just get offended or upset, but actually hear what I'm saying. Because we had those tablets for years. If we're going to spend significant funds, then we have to either have express commitments from the sites that they're gonna use it, or they have to be required to use it. So for example, if there is going to be uh, the, the hybrid classroom, right? And we have four schools that say, you know what, we've been collaborating through the pandemic and we want to continue to do that, and we are gonna continue to do that, um, within this four-school group or larger, just making the numbers up, right? That's one thing, but we cannot spend this kind of money without either a commitment or requirement that it's gonna be used. So, um, and I get the audio visual, that is a, not the audio, the classroom audio, that is an immediate need. I totally understand what you're saying, as I try to talk to you through this mask. Um, but for the rest of it, particularly the hybrid conference room, for me, I have to know that there is very serious commitment or better yet, to be frank, requirement, that this stuff is actually going to be used.
So I can say one thing I know for sure. We used to bring our principals together for full days all the time, taking them away from their campus for professional development. This is one place that I can almost assure that we would be using those devices where the three or four members of a administrative team on a site could be in the same place and still be able to attend to students to something go and be fully engaged in the professional development that's required. So just from that lens, we know that that would be one place that it would happen. We can come up with many others that would be for sure mandated.
And, and I'm gonna tell you, I'm not saying that you can't come up with things, cuz I could come up with things all day. I could sit here and come up with all kinds of things, right? Right now, we don't have this. Those same meetings that you're talking about are happening in the Zoom. There's no reason that they can't happen in the Zoom a year from now. So, like I said, we could come up with all kinds of reasons to justify things. It's not necessary right now because it can happen in the Zoom. But if you want to do it, if you think that it is the right thing to do, then I am simply saying to you, I need to know that people are really going to use it and not just the administrator, cuz this is not really just about administrator.
Right.
If the teachers, I mean, let's just put it out there, right? If the teachers are not gonna use this stuff, I don't want to spend money on it. So, um, we're gonna move to the next item, alright?
Alright, tonight, uh, Mr. He is gonna give this an update on the prioritization committee.
Good afternoon and happy Saint Patrick's Day. Today, we're gonna talk about updating the facilities master plan. Uh, last month, we were here to talk about proposed criteria and metrics. So this slide is sort of a recap of that. Um, in the original two thousand sixteen facilities master plan, there were priority sites that were set forward uh, that either had very little improvement since they were first built or had a construction project that was for some reason halted. Um, and so we have addressed two of those school sites with Michelle Obama, formerly Wilson, and Lake, which is currently in the project, process of being rebuilt. Um, so the remaining nineteen sites, um, have a criteria set forward to be strictly applicable to them. And then in the last, um, facilities meeting, it was determined, um, and recommended by the, by the facility committee through staff, that some of these um, actually were probably better applied to, um, all district school sites. So you'll see the yellow, uh, in the bottom of the criteria that was kind of shifted to that goal. And then we have the white that were, um, set forward by the prioritization committee. Next slide. So the next, uh, step in the process was to weight the criteria. So then stepping back, trying to figure out the best way to weight the criteria, we looked at, um, kind of thought about the intent of the original master plan. Um, what the measure Arbond talked about, discussions that we heard through the prioritization committee and the twenty-twenty community survey that asked about which criteria were more important than others. And kind of taking those things in a whole, we came up with this scale where number one, weighting would just be basic criteria. Number two, weighting would allow for things that required larger amounts of change. Um, and, and also, um, criteria that applied to providing equity across the district. And, um, the most or highest weight would be a three, and that would be for health and safety requirements. Next slide. So just taking that group of criteria that was in the white on the previous slide uh, that are being applied to the nineteen sites, uh, we have, uh, recommended that this weighting be considered by the facilities committee. Um, so functionality score really talks about how well, um, the site matches the need of the educational program. Uh, so that was a weight of two because there are some significant needs in that listing and some minor ones. So it landed kind of in that middle section. Seismic needs was placed in the three category because it's a health and safety issue. The age of school was placed in the one category because the age of school has some implication of how well the school is currently offering education. But there are differences between, uh, construction types and different improvement projects that have been completed. So that was kind of relegated to that, um, one category. The physical condition measured all sorts of things from structure um, and roofs to flooring, um, and some cosmetic components. Uh, so, but because it also covered the ADA access, um, pieces of the site site as well as the structural, uh, we decided that that was a health and safety and put it in three. Uh, black and brown youth were a percent of students that are low-income ESL or foster youth, we put in the two category, um, for again, that equity component. Uh, the number of restrooms and sinks was put in in the one category because really, um, if needed, uh, smaller projects could complete or remedy that situation across the district. So it wasn't a requirement of a full rebuild. The lack of view windows and access from green space on campus was placed in the two category. Uh, adding windows, depending on the structure of a building, can be a huge endeavor. So, uh, that was thought to be a, um, a more major project. Level of ventilation, uh, operable windows in HVAC system, uh, the pandemic, along with our smoke days and everything else that's happened recently, have taught us that this is a health and safety issue. So that we, we place that in the three category. Next slide. As far as next steps, uh, the recommended criteria metric and weighting for the nineteen sites, uh, we're hoping to be presented to the full board if the facilities committee will, um, adopt or recommend what uh, has been brought forward. Once adopted, the data for the nineteen sites will be applied to create the sequencing. And to bring this all together to complete the facilities master plan, the remaining sites will be incorporated using the district-wide initiative initiatives of technology, air quality and thermal comfort and student housing. So just to kind of look at that in a more graphic form, we, we have in the top box, the blue that we're really focusing on with these initial metrics. But then we also have the district-wide initiative components. Um, so all of those will be brought together for option development to create that final implementation plan. Any questions?
Does that conclude the presentation on this particular item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Christian, it's four fifty-five. Uh, this meeting is supposed to end at five. And we have a special board meeting that's supposed to start at five thirty. Um, and they're all important topics. This is, uh, definitely not a topic that I want us to rush through. And so I'm gonna start with the question of is there a reason that we cannot bring this back to the next facilities meeting?
We do have another meeting on the second, which we could bring it back to. This is currently not agenda, agendized for the board on the twenty-fourth. So yes, we can bring it back.
Okay, let's bring this one back. I do see that there are some people who have their hands raised. Let's have them do their public comment. So, um, they're able to say what they need to say, um, but we'll bring this item back. Okay, so, um, Mr. Christian, is that okay with you?
Yes, that is, that's good.
Okay, so let's take those two, uh, individuals and their public comment.
Mr. Gosney, you may unmute.
Thank you very much. And with all due respect to the great work that the staff did on this presentation and everything, this was, the data in this presentation did not come from the prioritization committee. This is staff information. As I said, we were at, at the last facilities meeting, the facilities committee directed staff to take the prioritization committee out of the loop and for staff to come and finish this project. We are not being consulted on this. We are not being told about it. It's all coming from staff. And it's, I'm, I'm, this is not any kind of reflection on the data that they presented. But I don't want anybody confused and thinking that this had the support or the input from anybody on the prioritization committee because we were fired from that, from this project at the last facilities meeting. Uh, and that needs to be go on straight, be, be straight about that, make sure people understand that and go on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Is there another comment?
There is, uh, Mrs. Moher.
Hi, I, I also served on the prioritization with Mr. Gosney, and I just recently watched last month's meeting. Um, I'm also very concerned that you did not take last month's facility meeting decisions back to the prioritors, prioritization committee for discussion. The role of the prioritization committee as defined was to update the criteria used to order the nineteen priority sites. There was no discussion of moving those criteria as an assessment tool for all fifty-five sites. That really needs to be a topic of discussion with the prioritization committee. Additionally, per the slides provided during the prioritization meetings, the committee was tasked with discussing the weighting that was to be used. Trustee Phillips should not direct the facilities group to circumvent the prioritization committee. Um, additionally, I'd like to take issue with Trustee Phillips' comment at the last meeting about a school gaming the system. That is uncalled for and untrue. It showed a callous disregard for the real health and safety concerns affecting district students and staff that went into making those decisions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Miss Moher. So it's four fifty-nine, and this, uh, is the second to last item. What we're going to do is, we're going to bring back C five uh, for, uh, questions and discussion, uh, from the, uh, the committee. Uh, and again, you know, all of these, uh, things are really recommendations to go to the full board. Uh, so, um, the full board will make the, the ultimate decision as to what happens. Uh, not this committee. Uh, I just want to remind people of that. Um, and so then we have item C six, which is project and financial reports. Is there a reason that that cannot come back like C five?
No, and this is just a standing item. And so because the length of the day, this was provided to informational only uh, that you can review, um, outside of the committee meeting.
Okay, so thank you very much. Um, taking that into consideration, um, Mr. Christian, unless you have any final comments, um, we are going to adjourn this meeting. Uh, and get right back in the Zoom and go to our next meeting. Um, Mr. Christian, do you have any additional comments?
No additional comments.
Okay, so that said, uh, this meeting is adjourned and we will, uh, see you all next time. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you.